All right, what's happening everyone? Aloha Friday, aloha Friday. Sorry for jumping on a little bit late. We had again some technical issues, but Felicia solved it for us. She's amazing. We got Felicia Cowden on tonight, Kauai County Council member, council candidate for the Kauai County Council in November, and we're gonna hear her story and hear her plans. And just want to welcome everybody. I know it's Friday, long week, long weekend coming up. We won't be on on Monday in honor of Labor Day. It's also my birthday. Yeah, Monday, special, special day. So yeah, so we're not gonna be having a show on Monday. We'll pick it back up on Wednesday and Friday, of course. So hope you guys all have a great week. I'm gonna bring Felicia on and we can kill some time until our viewers come on because they usually, you know, we usually have about a 15 minute warm up where we, the reason we go on early is to make sure we don't, you know, we get the technical issues fixed up and, and we did in time. So how are you Felicia?
I'm great. And hey, early happy birthday on Monday. I'm gonna be at the Filipino Chamber of Golf. They're doing a scholarship, you know, for a golf game. So Filipino Commerce, their golf game on Monday.
Yeah, big Labor Day, big Labor Day golf tournament. It'll be awesome. I know a lot of people will be there. I'm not sure what we'll be doing, but I won't be golfing, that's for sure, just picking back and enjoying, enjoying the long weekend. So.
Yeah.
How, how are you? How are you? How are you? You look, you look chipper and cheery tonight, as you always do.
Thank you, thank you. I do feel chipper and cheery. You know, I just, I actually really enjoy you a lot. I was very pleased with how well you did in the, in the primary and it's my hope that I get to work with you, you know, so I'm probably smiling at that.
Thank you. Likewise, I was very, very happy and pleased as well. You know, and, but we, you know, we've had a few candidates on. I know you've jumped on the show and watched, you know, a lot of what we talk about. And we'll get into this, into these things a lot more later in the show. I do wanna, kinda wanna get our viewers in right now, so we kinda just stalling a little bit. But 39% of voter turnout, Felicia, 39%. So in reality, it's really a whole new election going into the general. And, and that's what I'm concerned of. I mean, you know, there's a lot of people that didn't vote. And again, you know, again, the minority of the people are, are making the decisions or selecting our leaders statewide for the majority. You know, I think statewide, we had a 40% turnout.
That is tough. Though I do wanna, I do wanna say thank you to that 39%, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
39% who did go out and who did vote. So that's great. And you know, I, I see people coming on from Seattle and San Diego. I think one's your dad. And then I just wanna give a good shout out to Ed. Yeah, I, I appreciate being on here. And I have to say, I love your sense of humor. Am I allowed to say good things about you? I know it's supposed to be an interview for me, but.
Well, it will be, it will be. But you can say all the good things you wanna about me right now.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna say a couple of good things, especially is Thomas your dad, by the way?
Yes, he is, yes he is.
Hey dad. So what I really enjoy with you Mel is that you have a strong opinion and you're able to really put it out there and assert it. And so sometimes I feel like I, you know, am one of the most verbal in the group. And so we have a relatively quiet council. And so I, I look forward to being on there. And I look forward to being able to have vigorous discussions with you. Because I would say that's one of your strengths.
Well, you know, well, thank you, first of all. And yes, I am, I am sometimes loud and it's the passion, you know, I know a lot of my advisors over the years have told me, you know, you gotta control the passion. And I, you know, that's just how, how I was, that's how I'm built. And, and I see that in you as well. I mean, I've watched the council meetings. I haven't watched a lot of them, but the ones that I have watched, you know, one of the things that really impressed me about, about you is the desire to ask questions. And, you know, I think people gotta understand and realize that, you know, asking a question, having a discussion or even a healthy debate is not a bad thing. It really isn't a bad thing. And I know a lot can get done with being, with being passive, but I think for, for the benefit of the people, for the benefit of the people that are either at chambers or watching on TV, watching these meetings, I think the more discussion, the more questions, like you're asking questions, not just for Felicia Cowden, but for Mel Raposo, who's watching at home. And I don't have that opportunity to ask. You're asking for all those people across the island that are wondering, you know, what's happening. And unless the question is asked by one of the seven council members, then the public just doesn't get.
The public doesn't hear it. And then, you know, I've, I've gone to council meetings for probably at least three decades. And the first half of that time period is when I had something on the agenda that I was really pursuing and I had a reason to. Then after I was with KKCR, I would go in and be participating in part to just be able to do good reporting and to understand. But then when I ran in 2013, because I knew enough about it, I went and I would be in there and just really pay attention, especially it's like when you're watching a game, if you, if you're, if you're on the second string, you're not in the locker room or out there eating with your friends somewhere. You need to be watching every play on the game. You need to know what's going on. And so that's how I treated it when I ran in 2014. And so I really got a good run up to it. And then I, I didn't win by 321 votes, I actually remember. But then I still kept going. And so I have spent a lot of time on the other side of the, the banister. So I know what it is to be sitting in there and hear the clerk say what's on there in a very, very quiet, long voice. You know, just da-da-da-da-da. You don't even know what's being discussed. And then when everybody says move to receive, everybody says yes, or move to approve, and everybody says yes, you didn't even know what it was. So I don't ask every question on that, but there's a lot that we could just say yes to. And I find it's an opportunity to share it with the public. And then also, a lot of times when I think I already know what it's about, and I ask, I learn a whole lot more that I didn't know. So I usually wanna hear what, what the staff have tried so hard on the mayor's side are bringing to the table. Yes, I want to listen along with everyone else. Hey, Ed, thank you so much. Yes, Solawahini in a tough group of other six, yes. So hey, I, I like to think I have a lot more to bring to the table than just my gender, but honestly, I think women and men are just a little bit different. Is it fair to say that?
Yeah, you know, Felicia, this show is unscripted, unrehearsed, unedited, obviously live, uncensored. So no, you can say whatever you want. And, and that's what makes, makes this show so enjoyable is that it's just real. It's just real. And you know, sometimes my wife, sometimes when she's on and she'll, she'll run in here and put the finger over the mouth, like relax. But no, I mean, it, it is what it is. But okay, before we go on, I know you mentioned KKCR. Felicia, I want to give you an opportunity to share your story. Who is Felicia Cowden? What, what, what did you do before council? What triggered you to run for council? Talk about your radio show. Talk about you. Just give, take as much time as you want, but share with our viewers, who, who is Felicia Cowden?
Okay, thank you so much. And for those who don't know me, I am Felicia Cowden. I'm running for my third term in office. I live in Kealawea. I have lived 39 years-ish on the North Shore of Kauai. And for people who don't know me, at one point, my background was in engineering. That's what I studied in school, NAU, more in semiconductor electronics and computer science, not really power company kind. I did work at Intel for a few years, but I, I moved to Kauai. I was not born here. I was raised in the Rocky Mountain areas. I moved around mostly Colorado and Arizona. I'm almost 60. So two thirds of my life have been here. I worked at Intel for a point. And that actually did a lot to formulate who I am in terms of understanding management by objectives, how to set goals with the group, and how to make sure that everybody achieves them. So it was a very good foundational education for me. But I moved to Kauai when I was really quite young. And 18 of those years, I had a small business, Hanalee Serv Company with my then husband Charlie Cowden. And you know, I had 40, 50 employees at that time. Ran about a $4 million budget, which was a lot for us then. So I, I have a good understanding of small business. Also did some teaching here and there at Hanalee School. And then I ran my own small independent school. And I've had years of boards and volunteerism, like so many boards, I can hardly, I don't even wanna count them, it would bore the audience. Right now, I'm on the Lions Club, the East Kauai Lions Club. But another volunteer thing that I've done is Kauai Community Radio. And I believe that is a lot of the reason why I'm in office now, because I was a community facilitator. In a way, it was a talk show about community conflicts and community problems called Kauai Soapbox. I'm still on that show, but taking a break while I'm running. And I also am a court moderator, mediator with KEO, Kauai Economic Opportunity. So that's more skill at trying to balance challenges. So that's a little bit of my history. Food forest, big part of that, neighborhood agriculture, is a little bit of my background. And Mel, you and I have known each other, I was trying to think about that, maybe 20, 22 years, I believe. And we were both in the inaugural class of Leadership Kauai. So that was great. And yeah.
Yeah, that was quite a while ago. Yeah, we were the guinea pigs for what turned out to be a very, very, very successful leadership program. But I can remember being in the classrooms when the speakers never showed up, so they had to go hustle speakers. And but, but yeah, it turned out to be a really good, really good program.
And Bernard was in our class.
Yeah, Bernard was in our class as well. Yeah, that was pretty cool, pretty cool.
Yeah.
So, so what, what, at some point, you decided that you wanted to run for public office? And what, what was, what was the trigger for that? What, what made you?
Well, the trigger on that was, you know, getting so involved, I suppose, with, you know, we, we had this big challenge, we called that the 249 one time, there was the pesticide debate that I got involved in. And I would say that one of the things I learned from that whole experience is how important it is to solve problems without having to make anybody wrong. I saw it really ended up dividing our community. I want to acknowledge that even at that time, I, I got on with you fine. You did some really important things with the state. So that was part of what pushed me into it the first time in 2013, 2014. And I, I did not win that time, but I ran again in 2018. So it was four years later and I wasn't going to until the flood happened. And so I was out in Wainaha and Hana-Hayana after the flood. And I didn't go out there because I thought I was gonna run for office, anything like that. I just was out there and was passionately helping. And I really actually made a difference. I didn't know how long I'd be out there for. I went out for four days. And when I stepped off boat, somehow I knew I needed to run. And inside, I even knew that I would win. So that's what got me in there. And then, you know, I, I would say four years later, what is different is I have a much deeper understanding of what it means to be in council. Like it's really easy to run when you've never been in there, maybe you go all the time. But what you don't realize is there's all these laws and all these rules that keep you from doing things that you think is so simple. Like when I listen to passionate challengers and they say what they're gonna do. Well, you know, I think we've needed to do the same thing for a long time. I look at the old cards and we're all talking about how important it is to get, build housing. Like right now, I'd say the passionate priorities is even more so than in the past, is retaining our population. So many people are getting pushed off the island. And in the last couple of years, it just feels like sheets in the wind, how many people have been pushed away. So part of that's lack of housing, part of that is not having that inspiring work or having enough that brings you money. So I'm passionate about that. And when I look at, well, what's a good job? And what I think that we've seen after the shutdown in the pandemic is not, not everybody is that excited about going back to work, right? They have learned it's sometimes cheaper to stay home, sometimes the, what, you know, they, they called the great resignation. There's a lot of reasons for that, but I think people really grabbed hold of fact that they want a dignified life. And I think that is so important. And what we have been seeing creeping up for decades is depression and drug use, even suicide. We've had five in the past, it feels like maybe 10 days, three of which I was directly involved with. One, a very dear friend of mine. And so, and the houselessness, all of that's, you know, together. And it's really, really hard for me to not continue to work hard. And you know, every time the council changes, we have a different group that has a different strategy of going towards solving something. But I would say probably all seven of us that are sitting on there, we all have the same desire, I think, that not one of them would disagree with anything that I've said there. We just have different approaches. And so I'd say that that's the, that's the big difference, is the different approach. And somehow, Mel, I think you're a little bit more like me in how you approach things, you know? You're gonna, you're gonna really grab it and look at it, we're gonna have a real conversation. And what I wanna do is solve the problem. We don't necessarily need a new law. We don't need a new rule. What we need to do is solve the problem. And a lot of times, anytime you put a bill for an ordinance or you find some tax or some sort of thing, you're gonna help some and you're gonna hurt some. I'd like to help as much as we can before we risk hurting some. So I, I, my preference in, in how I have functioned in the county is looking where we have problems. And a lot of the work that I do is actually through the managing director and just working to solve what is, what is right, rather than coming up with a new bill or an ordinance. So, so that's a little bit about my style.
Yeah, you know, and, and just for information, the first time I ran back in 98, I didn't, I lost by a little over 200 votes. And I didn't run for four years. I ran four years later and then did get elected. So we got that in common.
Yeah.
But yeah, you know, I think every, every new council comes with a new set of ideas and, and styles. Which brings me, I guess, to the first, again, unscripted. So I'm just, we're just gonna, we're just gonna, we're just gonna do it, do it. Term limits and districting. You, you know, there was a time where, in fact, the districting issue was on the ballot a few times and it never did pass. In fact, when the term limits passed, they would, they, both were on the, the general election ballot as a charter amendment. Term limits and districting, the term limits passed, but not the districting. What are your thoughts on term limits? For, for, you know, now that you're in there and you understand that it takes a while to learn the process, like you mentioned earlier. And, you know, oftentimes when you reach, you get to your term limit, you're out. And some, some of these things take a long time to work on. And then districting, districting. You, you kinda defied the odds because there was, you know, the whole argument was that, you know, the West Side and the North Shore didn't have representatives that were living in the district, but you, you were able to, to make it happen. So what are your thoughts on, on those two, term limits and districting?
Okay, I'll start with term limits. First of all, in all humility, most likely, I would never have made it in if there, if it wasn't for term limits. And three left, it was the same time that you left. And, and honestly, I might not always agree with you or always agree with Joanne, but it felt like engine one and engine two left the council. And so, because that's where the vigorous debate was going on. So it was really different when I went in there. And I think that what I really saw once I got on there is how important it is to have institutional memory. So when you have brand new council members that don't know how the system works and you have sometimes staff who haven't been in there that long either, there's not quite enough information. And something that has been really nerve wracking for me is I, and especially I watch like a police department, all these people with a lot of rank are retiring. I see so many people have retired out of the, out of the county. It's like, it's, it's a whole new generation. So I really honor the work that everybody's doing. But I think term limits is problematic in that you do lose institutional memory. What I would think, if we did want term limits, I think we should have three, four year terms. And then stagger the way that the term starts. So three run one time, four run another. And when you have a two year term, the way we have it, everybody's always running against each other. And you're pretty much always campaigning. Two years is not long enough to really get something done. So I don't think it's a good idea. But doing, you know, three, four year terms, 12 years, you should be knowing what you're doing. I would think by four years into it, certainly six. So if you can't pull it off in 12, you know, maybe you're not the right person for the job. But four years also gives a longer time to make things happen. And then when you're talking about districting, I used to think that districting was good until I got in there. And even until I ran the first time that I lost by, as I said, 321 votes, I still remember that, as I said. What I think is good about being at large is how much I learned from the different parts of the island. And I've lived on the North Shore the whole time. So of course I've had a favoritism for the North Shore. But since I've been in there, oh my gosh, the whole island is just absolutely beautiful. And places that I didn't really realize or notice how gorgeous both the land is and how unique and effervescent and vibrant are the people. And by going out, by learning, it makes me a better council person when I have to reach to every area. And I really, sometimes I feel bad because I spend more of my time on the other areas of the island. But I make better decisions. And so if we were districted, I think that the problem would be that people would really never know or understand, or they wouldn't need to know or understand about the other side. Or if there was a conflict with a given leader from the other side with their people, they would hardly, the, the people would have no way to work it out. I think if you did have districting and you did that, that four and three, maybe the three would be districted and the four would always be at large, or something to that effect. Because our island isn't that big. And there's something to be learned and gained from every portion of it. So that's what I would say about that.
One of the nice things about being in office is number one, you learn a lot about your community, your entire community, the whole island. You learn a lot about yourself. It takes a lot of courage to say that I, I had favoritism for the North Shore. But I think that's just, that's human nature. That's, that's the, that's kinda the, the community that you spend your time in. And for me, it was capa, I mean, you know, and, and possibly lihui, but I didn't know much about the North Shore or even on the West Side. But what I, what I really appreciate about the at-large council that we have here, as opposed to the other islands, is that you can, you can, as, as a constituent, as a resident of this island, you have seven representatives that you can go to. You, you have seven. If you were districted, you, you would have your district representative and possibly one at large or two at larges. But you, you, you have an opportunity to reach out to seven council members that can all work on your behalf. And what I've, over the years, 14 years in the county council, and I've worked with councils from all the other counties, they, they don't enjoy that. What they have is they have districts that compete with each other for pieces of the pie. And that is what makes Kauai special and unique. And, and that's why I think the districting for an island of our size, not just geographically, but also in population that we, the seven at-large members are probably most beneficial to the, to the residents, to the constituents, to the voters. It's much more difficult for the, the candidates because you gotta campaign the whole island. But at the end of the day, I believe it's much more beneficial to, to the constituents.
Well, I would like to say that I actually delight in going to the different communities that I hadn't previously been as involved in. When I started doing KKCR, I think it was about 12 years ago, that also brought me to other areas. But I think, you know, when you go to a different community, it's like you're going to someone's home. And so as an individual citizen, I think I felt needed to be invited to go deep into a valley or go down a road that I don't really have a reason to be down. Whereas as a council person, it's my kulianna to go down there. And it's my kulianna to sit there and look and see how I can help. And even when I, you know, I, I, I actually delight in helping people that maybe didn't like me. I, 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 it doesn't matter if somebody votes for me or doesn't vote for me, or whatever they might feel. If they're here and breathing on this island, they are my kulianna. And so I, I feel like I've really developed as a person, as I've gotten to know more and more people going, going that way. So, so I think that's interesting. I'm getting a little bit distracted by the coarse words on the side of the.
Yeah, it's, we, this, this clown comes on our YouTube feed. We, we're live on YouTube, Twitter, LinkedIn. So every time, every time he pops up, I, I block him. And he just changes his name and he comes back on. And we had this the other night. I, you know, he's, yeah, try not to get distracted.
Yeah, I figured out how to not look at the, the comments. I was wanting to be able to see the comments in case people had questions. I know what I wanna bring up, Mel, because you are very involved with National Association of Counties. And I just came back from the annual one in Denver. And, you know, I had gone to the Western Region and the Rural Action Caucus in Anchorage, Alaska. And that's for people who don't know what these words mean, is these are conferences where people from around the country, different council peoples from counties everywhere come and sit there and talk. And I tell you, like in the Anchorage one, I was just shocked because the problems that we're having, which I consider, you know, the displacement, the crazy inflation on the housing prices, the depression, the homelessness, all those things, I didn't realize how everywhere was having it, you know? It doesn't matter whether you're in Wisconsin or Stillwater, Oklahoma, or Flagstaff, Arizona, Canyon City, Colorado, Farmington, New Mexico, a three bedroom house, two bath, basic house of $775,000. Right? And then there's the, the movement. So it's a migration from urban to rural. So we have all these metropolitan prices coming to our urban areas where I thought it's just like, hey, let's face it, this is Garden Eden. I feel like we're one of the most beautiful places on the entire planet. So with remote work, of course, people are coming here. But it's happening everywhere as people are leaving the cities. And then what I'm seeing, especially I learned in the annual one where there was urban and rural, is in the cities, there's this big influx of immigrants from war torn areas and different places. And you know, hey, maybe we're the ones who created the problems there. But there, the, the cities are getting overwhelmed with very much new people coming in from a different place. You know, it's like, if you look at human beings, like currents of the ocean, you know, it's mixing up all over the world. from a different place. You know, it's like, if you look at human beings, like currents of the ocean, you know, it's mixing up all over the world. And so where I thought a lot of the problems were either we weren't doing something right as a county, or it was just that we're so special because we're amazing. And I would think, you know, Jackson Hole, Wyoming, or you know, some place like that where everybody wants to be, would be having the problems. But actually, you know, going to these conferences, you just see, you get context about what's happening around everywhere. And um, you know, I, I would just see that our local conditions that seem so hard, like for example, just even being in a restaurant today, a nice little restaurant that I like to eat at near the council building, just talking to them about the cost of the to-go containers and not, not being able to get sugar. And um, the whole realm of problems from electric going up, and it's gonna be going up more, uh, wastewater is gonna be going up more, pretty much everything is going up. So restaurants will have a certain set of problems, certainly constructions having another set of problems, and the cost of lumber, cost of doing concrete. This is happening around the world, not just here. And so it isn't um, the solutions aren't quite as simple as they might seem. And you know, even just looking at the shipping, that's something I've been putting a focus on, is shipping. And just seeing like a dry pallet might come in, used to be forty, forty-two dollars, now it's like hundred and seventy-five dollars, or it's, it's really high. So um, the question becomes, how do we take care of our people? And I think it's important that we don't keep moving the goal. Like by, you know, really radically raising real property tax. Like we had an extra forty-nine million in our budget this year beyond the terror's monies. And yay, yay on our side. But you know, that came out of some pockets. And some of them, maybe they could afford it, but not everybody could. And so I'm, I'm highly, highly conscious of what, you know, we're doing to displace our people.
Yeah, I think, you know, and, and yeah, thanks for bringing up the, the conferences. Because I know oftentimes there's the people in the community, I believe it's a waste of money. But you know, many of the ideas, many of the, and the connections that, that you make and the resources that you can reach out and talk to, because you're right, uh, many of our issues, especially in the Western Region, uh, for natural resources, uh, and the impacts on our natural res- resources are shared by the Western Region states. I mean, it just makes sense. But yeah, you're right, all across this country, everybody's feeling the same pinch. And it's, you know, it's because of the inflation, everything else. Uh, but yeah, there are things that the county, I was very disappointed when I found out that the county had an extra forty-nine million dollars uh, that was unanticipated. I was very disappointed with the state when they found out they had this huge surplus of funds. And you know, yeah, they chose to give back three hundred bucks to each taxpayer, blah, blah, blah. And, and you know, I always believed that if in fact you had more money than you needed, then you, you give it back uh, in the way of a tax rate decrease. Um, because you see, every year, the county brags that we didn't raise property tax, we didn't raise property tax. No, we didn't have to raise property tax in the last X amount of years, but the reality is the assessments went up. So when your assessments go up.
Your tax goes up.
Right. It's, it's, for all intents and purposes, it's a tax increase. So regardless of what the, the, the verbiage that we didn't raise tax rates, yeah, but we raised your taxes. And yeah, for the homeowners, the people that live in their homes, uh, for those that rent out to affordable uh, families, affordable income families, yeah, you got the three percent cap. But why, why did we increase taxes uh, when, when we had a surplus of funds? We have two options, right? You have two options. You either refund some of that or you spend it. And.
Well, we, we, one of the things that we did, and I complained when we were doing it. And sometimes I do things that I wish I hadn't done, even though it would have just been a six-one vote. Very often, things are a six-one vote. But we, I believe I voted yes. We, we lowered the rate for real residential investor from two million to one point three. Well, like in Zone Five where I live, that's a house. I mean, you go a little bit further west than me, that's a shack. And so people who don't do all their paperwork right, they really got caught in that trap. You know, that was like a net that was cast to catch the big fish and we caught an awful lot of little fish in terms of um, taxing people as if they're uh, don't live here when they really did live here. And you know, it's easy to make mistakes. People don't understand the tax policy. It's very difficult to, to get it and, because it's so complicated. So we, we have, we have problems like that. I don't think that we consciously raise the tax, but because of choices like that, taxes raised. And because, because of the inflationary pressure, and then the market pressure from people moving over here, you know, the taxes went up a lot. So, so that, that, that was, you know, really a, a big problem. And um, I, you know, I, I read all my emails, I do my very best to respond to everyone, I make calls. And I would say something about me, if I can say where I'm a little different. I don't believe Bernard has a job right now, but he um, he's got a lot, you know, in his life, but like I, old enough that my kids are grown, they help me, I don't have to help them. I don't have another job, I don't have a business. This is the only thing I do and I'm a workforce. I'm just, that's how I'm wired. So if I'm breathing, I'm pretty much engaging. Uh, I, I go on these family vacations that are happening all the time. I, I'm the one who is gonna answer your email, I'm gonna show up, I'm gonna listen, I'm gonna call you. And so I, I really am able to pay attention to what's going on for people's quality of life and where there's changes. And even, even a tiny thing, Mel, you might be able to answer this for me, because I wanted to go to the football game uh, tomorrow in Hanapepe. And I couldn't figure out how to get my online tickets, you know? Because I guess you can't pay when you go in anymore. And so like to me, that's a little nuanced, because I think about the kupuna and people who just wanna go to the game. And if you don't have a bank card or a credit card, and a lot of people don't have that, how do you even go to the football game? Do, do you know the answer to that? Do you know where I could get my tickets?
I, I, I don't. Um, and I'm hoping one of our viewers, one of the villagers uh, can answer that. I know we have some West Side people on here. I know we got some Waimea Manyhune faithfuls um, watching. I don't. I, I was not aware of that.
I, I was like, I was told, I was told yesterday, hey, you can't just pay when you go to the game.
Quite baffling. Um, I, 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 uh, I don't know. Um, I'm hope, I'm hoping that uh, somebody on the, that, that's watching right now, Scotty Shapiro says, Felicia definitely returns phone calls. I, I see the post, Felicia. I see, I see people, Kauai ransom raves and whatever, and they'll, they'll say, you know, I sent out, uh, I sent out emails to all the council members, I only got an answer from Felicia. So I, I think that, you know, that, that, that's one of the most important things as an elected official, as a government leader, as a department head. I, I can tell you, I called planning uh, last week. I had questions for planning. I'm still waiting for a return call. Um, that, that bothers me when I call our government. I mean, it upsets me when I call a private business, uh, but I don't pay their salaries, right? When I call the government and I leave a message, I expect to get a call back. And I, and I haven't, I haven't. So uh,
Yeah, I do call back and honestly, that's my favorite part of the job, is actually hearing and learning from the people. And then sometimes I'm, I'm cautioned to say, hey, you can't get involved in everything. So while I, I don't have enough time to get involved in any, everything, but I certainly try. And when I do go help this individual or that individual, um, usually it helps me understand something about, you know, flood mitigation or um, you know, problems with livestock, or that we're having a drought and how that affects the livestock. Or, you know, a whole number of problems, like what's going on with our heavy equipment and our big trucks on the island. By going out and actually sitting and walking in somebody's shoes for a few moments, a few days, whatever, water um, uh, water quality problems. I mean, there's so many, so many different challenges. But all of it comes together in a big ball, really, and it's all related. And I think what is the most frustrating for me in um, dealing with government policy is we, we have these little bills at a time instead of a holistic approach. So it, it feels like we're attacking the capillaries and not the jugular. You know, when you look at housing, you might go down, you know, fix one little piece here, one little piece there. But it, you know what it reminds me of? Have you ever waited tables? You know, when you have that big tray and you've got like glasses on it or plates? And you've got it all balanced and you're walking. If somebody puts a big, heavy glass on it or takes a plate off, it's gonna, like it's gonna dump, right? And that's what it is when you, when you introduce a new policy, especially like for the last couple of years and really almost for the four years. People don't come into office anymore. They don't come in and testify. We might get a few little letters, but, but um, for the viewers that are out there, we need you in government. Um, the people are like a whole branch of government, and that's what creates the balance. Because when something comes to us, we're either hearing from a special interest or what other branches of the government want. And if we don't have the balance of how it impacts the people or how the people are able to handle it, um, I don't think we make the best decisions. And so that, that's something that I, that I try, you know, really hard to do. Hey, I know what I want to say too.
Fire away.
Okay, so I, if I, if I could just be honest, you know, I, I barely came in. Did you notice that? Like um, uh, I was position number seven, and so I was very thankful for that. I, I, um, it doesn't make me feel good to beat anybody else, but I, I had expected to do better. So I have to really learn, all right, well, where am I not addressing people right? But I've had, I, you know, I think I have stronger um, incumbents coming back, like yourself and Ross. And um, you know, I, I appreciate when people are uh, honest with me. And you know, I'm from the North Shore, then I'm white, then I'm female, you know, whatever. But we do need diversity on the council. And then the other piece of me that did have a, a childhood in the Rocky Mountains and actually um, uh, I would say a housing insecure childhood. I, I don't feel like I had a bad childhood, but I did not have an easy one. And then having worked in the high-tech industry for a little bit, the reason why I came to Kauai is Intel loved Kauai even back then. Even like forty years ago, this was the place of choice. So where I live in Kealawea, I literally live between wealth and want. I have billionaires down the block and other houses right around me that there might be nine cars in the yard. That means there's nine working adults. You can see, I live in a Hicks home. Um, and I'm thankful for my Hicks home. But um, I can talk to both sides. And I think that one challenge that we have is we've got just this um, huge wave of new people coming here. We need to figure out a way to assist them in what I would say assimilating, you know, and picking up our values rather than eclipsing this community. And even here, when I'm saying our, like I, I'm, I'm owning it, I wasn't born here. But we have certain value systems here and we need to help people know how to, how to manage in that. And then what we also have is there's a lot of people who are coming with extraordinary talents. And they're not trying to take a job away from anybody, but they might really be able to help us with some things. So, you know, let's take that help. Let's take the help on our terms. And I, I find I am skilled at being able to have that conversation with that community. And so I think that's something that I also bring to the table. I wouldn't want to be on there with seven Felices. I think we need to have a whole different uh, group of people that are in there. But that, that, that's a strength that I do. And as I said, like at the beginning when we were doing a warm-up, um, I think we're basically the same, but there is a difference between men and women. I think there, it feels like we're not allowed to even say that anymore.
You can on this show. On this show, you can say whatever you want.
So um, my mothers might see the world just a little bit differently. And um, I think it gets, it's out of balance. Really honestly, I'd like to see a little bit more gender balance in there. But um, I love all the men that are working the job, but it, it does seem like it should have some balance.
You know, and I think a lot of, a lot of uh, females, you know, are um, hesitant to run because they, they think, you know, it's a male-dominated council and it has been for many, many years. Uh, for, in fact, forever. I don't think we've ever had a.
One or none. I think there's been, Joanne and Nadine were on there at the same time. That's, and not for very long either.
Yeah. And yeah, we'll see. Uh, you know, I, I, we, we, there are a, a bunch of women that ran in this, in this race. So we'll see. Again, you know, it's, but Felicia, you know for yourself, you, you know, putting your name on the ballot and holding a sign is not gonna get you elected. I mean, and, and you know, I, I talked to a lot of young people, trying to convince them to start getting involved. And getting involved isn't sign-waving. I mean, it's getting involved is being in the community and, and not because you wanna run for office, or not when you're running for office, but you need to be in the community as you have been for decades uh, before you decided to run. Uh, you, you need to be, you need to be in that community. You need to, people need to see and know who you are and that you in fact have, have a true compassion for, for the people and the communities. And it's not easy. It's not easy to get elected. It's actually sometimes more difficult to get re-elected. So, but, but you cannot just run, get a nice slogan, get a nice sign and go hold a sign and expect to get elected. You gotta work hard. And that goes for men as well as women.
And, and I am seeing some of these comments, um, like Laurel said, she appreciates the homestead and senior and low-income discounts. Absolutely thumbs up on that. Absolutely. We need to be able to take care of the people who um, have the deepest roots and the most commitment to the community. And if I can give a slight shout-out to our part-time residents, you know, that's where almost sixty percent of the property tax is coming from, right? So um, we are subsidized. I, you know, we pay a thousand dollars, the neighbors down the street pay a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Like one house will pay more than all the rest of the houses on this street because of that difference. And yes, so we need those discounts. Um, so I think that's important. Um, and then when we're talking about traffic, I'm seeing people speaking about the traffic. Uh, I think one of the things that really added to the traffic is when we concentrated all the services into Leahui. It was around nineteen nineties, after the hurricane, they put all these big box stores right in Leahui. And then, you know, the movies and everything else before that, we had, like, I honestly, I would have two thousand miles a year on my car. Like that's like how little I went anywhere. Um, before the nineties or in the early nineties. Even after that, like you could fly out of your area, you could do a lot of different things like that. And I think as, you know, so much of the workforce goes to um, Leahui and people even go shopping for shampoo and cheese, right, in Leahui. It's part of the, part of the traffic problem. But that's a big one to fix. It's a big one to fix, to be adding the extra lanes. It's nice that we're getting a fourth lane between Hanamalua and uh, Waialua, so that will help um, the, the traffic to the north.
Temporarily. I, I mean, I think, you know, the, the frustration for me is that, and this is a drum that I've been beating for a long time, you know, from twenty years ago with Congress and with our state legislature is that um, it's not enough. It's simply not enough. And, and to think that uh, the number of people on our island is not gonna grow, um, you know, I don't think that's, that's why. So I mean, at some point, at some point, we have to start planning for the future. And I understand the whole movement to, to transit and, and bike paths and, and all of these things. But you know, and, and I, I, I won't say this, and I know I upset a lot of people, but when the Tiger Grant money, the seventeen million that we, we got in a very highly uh, competitive grant process and, and the administration chose to, to develop, supposedly develop. The Tiger Grant was never a traffic grant, it's an economic development grant, and they wanted to do it on Rice Street. I voted against it. I was the only one that voted against it because it was clear to me. it was clear to me that um it wasn't going to work. And you know, it's been many years and uh you know, traffic's bad on Rice Street now, but it's not because of businesses that move to Rice Street. There's no real economic development on Rice Street. What it did was it it cluttered Rice Street from four lanes to two. I would have supported the Tiger Grant Felicia if they had spent that money in Kapaa uh or in Hanapepe where we had active uh projects, you know, you the 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 first Saturdays and and these art nights, art walks and stuff where the we needed to use the money there to create a safe environment and a very good economic driver for the island. But the whole Tiger Grant and Leahui didn't do anything for economic development. It really didn't. Um. In fact, more more people left Rice Street, more businesses left Rice Street than than came. So that's just one of the things that
I, yeah, where I'm going to agree with you on that is actually the all the one ways and everything like that. I watch it and even me, like everybody, you know, uses parking lots like thoroughfares and roads now because there's such a a spiral of what you have to do to get from point A to point B. Um, to 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 get even around Leahui, like if there was an emergency and the first responders drove the way they're supposed to drive, it would take forever to get to where they need to go. So I think that there's some problems with that. I think when the I I voted against the affordable housing bill because it it gave a break in Kaloa, Rice Street and Kalahill and and then when you're talking about Rice Street, it actually made it basically be eighty units per acre when we have a two-lane height road now or three-lane that was designed for um twenty units per acre. So it hasn't really made sense. Um. And then somebody said Tiger Grants made bang for the property owners that got density increases. Well, when they sell those properties, that will be the case because there really was no requirements out of them that went from twenty units per acre to eighty units per acre. But so far, that hasn't been um developed. Do you mind Melify answer some of these comments that have come?
Sure.
I doing that? I see Chris asked about having more services online and what is the hefty penalty for using a credit card? So they're passing the merchant fee onto the user. Having been a merchant, you know, merchants typically just have to eat it when they got the credit card uh payment. I get it that the county doesn't want to take that three percent um hit. I in fact have a an email set up because I that I haven't sent yet, but I'm going to send it to Treasury. Because I asked at one of these um credit unions, if somebody uses their debit card, what's the merchant fee on it? And so my understanding, if you use your debit card, you don't have a merchant fee. So I need to find that out. Because if we are getting a three percent merchant fee tax on somebody paying with their credit card and we're not even getting it, well, I have a real problem with that. So we need to look at that. Um, but I agree, Chris, that um I'm too cheap to do it. I write a check still yet because I don't want to pay three percent on my property tax.
Well, let let me ask you this, Felicia. Um, and yeah, please follow up on that that merchant fee on debit cards because I can see a lot of people getting a getting a refund. Um, but this is how I, when we had this discussion, you know, they never they never took credit cards. There was a time they didn't take credit cards. Sorry, cash or check. That is it. And it was a it was a very hard um uh debate on whether or not the county should take credit cards. And that was their thing, you know, well, you know, it comes with fees. Okay, hello, everything comes with a fee. But this is, this was my question because I I do not support the merchant fee. I just don't because when you get the time.
You would have the county, right?
Absolutely, because you want to encourage people to use the online service. Because what that does, the the cost, the time that it takes for a clerk to process that transaction, uh that somebody's still got to trans, got to process the transaction at the office. I bet is a lot more than the three percent or whatever they're charging at these kiosks or online and uh and that's how I looked at it. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna ask the public to help us alleviate the pressure so that we don't have you know, hour and hour and a half wait to driver's licensing or or auto registrations to go pay a tax or pay your tax. If 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 there wasn't that fee, you know, people may, more people may utilize the services online.
Yeah, and and
That was my philosophy and and of course it didn't go. That's why they're still charging the fee.
Well, um, what has happened is we now have these direct deposits right to the the bank for the the checks like that gets sent in to Honolulu. We've tried really hard to make it more efficient, but um, Chris, um, thank you for the extra reminder because I'm already looking at that and I'm already getting complaints and I even brought that up at the very beginning of when we did it. And so I I take the the air um route that takes more pressure on the county services because then I don't have to pay the the three percent. So so you're right. We had another comment here I wanted to um respond to. Uh, talking about future traffic issues back in the eighties. You know, people, um, I get a lot of people wanting to do this central road across the island. I remember how much that was fought because of the impact on the environment and the impact on the Hawaiian community or the uh preservation of the beauty of up in the mountains. And but I'm hearing more about that again, people wanting a a a road from power line trail, you know, down to Kaloa or Kapaa, different places, and to do that as a a toll road. I don't know what people feel about that. Um, all right, and I see we've got more on this. Uh, merchant fee is applicable with debit cards as well. Um, yeah, I will look into this. I'm glad that you guys ha- have brought that up. I I will, I will actually ask for a briefing on it and and see how it splits out and where we do get the charges because every little bit matters. And thus, I think, um Mel, what you are strong on and then what I'm strong on, though, you're more confrontational than me. Um, so it, you know, if you come in and you're confrontational, okay, great, you know, but um I think it's really important to ask clear questions um from government so that we have a lot of transparency. And um briefings bring it up and be maybe because I don't have another competitive job for my time. Right now, we only meet every other week. And so it seems like we we put about twelve to fifteen hours of time on the floor. I look at what Maui does and the Big Island does and Oahu does and you know, they're more like eighty. And yes, they're bigger and they have bigger populations, but I, when I, when I watch, sometimes I get invited to their council meetings, so I come in Zoom. They have robust discussions, though, when we talk about men and women being different. They're they're women-heavy. So they have um robust conversations and I think that that's what we need to do is have a committee, a committee week and really go deep on the topics and look a little bit more holistically, which you can do if you set it up like a workshop where you can just talk about traffic in general or talk about housing in general instead of one's very small vein of those issues.
One of the reasons I really appreciate you, Felicia, is because you're not afraid to work. Uh. You know, two, two meetings a month is simply inadequate. Uh, it is.
I I agree.
I I I and I, we've had this discussion prior and I know you do and I don't see how you can do the county's work effectively and productively and uh by meeting twice a month. That 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 just makes no sense. And even during COVID, uh, you know, because it was by Zoom, what the heck is the difference? If you couldn't get into the building, you know, whatever. My point is this, is to to do the county's business in two meetings a month is inadequate. And I I'm shocked that it's still happening, but it is what it is. And the other thing about the confrontational, you know, if if the administration or the or the person that's up testifying, because many times it could be a developer or it could be uh, you know, it could be a private entity that's up testifying at the council meeting. If they lie or they hide the truth or they omit something, then I am going to be very confrontational. And I should be confrontational because if you're going to come up to the county council and testify on behalf of something that you want to see or if you're responding to a request by uh the council, you know, I think this is just my my thing is that the the administration does not give the the council its due respect. Uh, it it is an administrative di- uh division and a legislative division. Both have an equal part in in this government that we we need to operate. Um, but I don't see that. Uh, what I see is is a very strong administration that uh that moves their priorities through the council and and it gets on and 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 that's why you can do it in two days a week or two months, uh two meetings a month. But when when this is, and I know you know this, Felicia, because you've been in there long enough, that you know information, right? You have information from employees, from department heads, you have in information from people that are in the know. And the the administration or the people will come up and testify and they'll leave out a part. They'll leave out a a a very important component of the discussion. I think it's our duty to call them on it and say, wait a minute, wait a minute, you know. So, yeah, sometimes the perception is un-confrontational and aggressive, but I don't like surprises. And I think when when you're summoned to come to the county council, um I, you you need to come up and you need to be open and honest. Uh, and and tha- that is really why I decided to run again because I want to bring that back to to the council.
So I would describe our current council as really polite. And then um I I might ask questions, but I'm still asking them politely. Um, it vigorous discussion, what what, when I worked at Intel, they called a co- constructive confrontation is often very important. And um I think that we need to move back into that. What what I am seeing is a big, thick agendas. There's a lot of things coming before us right now in in the next couple of months. And I would say it's like, oh, my goodness, you know, um, we better um shift strategies. And and so uh we we've got a lot going on this next Wednesday. Again, I just want to um uh look at what people are saying because I really appreciate what their points are. I'm seeing people, um, two really good points on this interior road. Um, I was on the, I was president of the North Shore Business Council when we agreed, okay, no uh interior road because of how it could just whole change the dynamics of the interior of the island. It was said, no, I see right here, a few people have said, yeah, no interior road. And then um I also see somebody who um uh brings up the point about the flooding, you know, and the potential for sea level rise. And we see even like the king tides coming up and and, you know, grabbing our roads. And it used to be we had these interior cane haul roads. And in fact, that road they're talking about was part of the the power line and the cane haul road. Um, so it used to be that there was there was more interior roads. I think, you know, inward and upward is important for our uh you know, storms and the problems and our our road slides, but it's all a balance. So just even like this little bit here with dialogue in our chat, I appreciate all of you because that's what we need to have. And when sometimes people will say, well, I don't have, Felicia, you don't seem to have real strong opinions. Well, I actually do, but in this job, I feel like my job is to listen to the people and to facilitate and to learn from the people. And to make a decision and help to weigh out everybody's good balance because they didn't hire me to do what I think is best. I believe I was elected to listen to the people and help us as a collective do what we all find is the best choice for all of it. It's not about me, it's about we. And and it's really, it's about, you know, the commu- the community. And so um that that that's that's a really good example. I'm, I know we're almost out of time. I mean, I can just sit there and keep going, but um I'm trying to look at like might be important. Hey, I didn't even say it. I'm Felicia Cowden, or maybe I said that at the very beginning. Um, running for my third uh term as your county council person, I humbly ask for one of your votes. And I am happy to work with whoever the voters want. I might be tickled a little bit to work with Mel. Um, I think that we would work well together, actually. I mean, I know you well enough that um I I know that. I I I I smile when I see um you you're in there. I think you came in third or something like that. I was unsurprised. Um. But if people want to know more about me, it's felicia cowden dot com. Uh, my cell phone is six, five, two, four, three, six, three. You can always just even Google that. Anywhere it's on, it's all over the place. And I welcome people to call me and ask me questions. I will say, um, just for a little little piece out there, you know, I know there's all kinds of things that have been said about me. Can I just mention some of the the negative, Mel? I know that's not really what people are supposed to do. Can I just be honest?
This is your hour, Felicia. This is your hour.
I've been more the last time really accused of being a white supremacist. People said I don't care about poor people, um, uh Russian tool, all these different things. And it's just not true. And just a little word on Russia, that was a real um uncomfortable situation for me, getting pulled into being involved in understanding why there was going to be another event here. There'd been an event in twenty seventeen. So there was going to be another one in twenty nineteen. I did, in the end, talk them out of coming. I I brought the people who were interested in doing that event to a couple of Mauna Kea marches and I said, look, both Russia and America represent colonialism. It's like you're inviting yourself to dinner at a house that's in the middle of a family fight. I kind of talked them out of coming. Um, what I did learn in that trip is it was very extraordinarily powerful people in the business community. Um, I would say the globalist is a fair way to say it and um people, there's a little unnerving for me, not that they weren't nice, but it's not about being nice. Um. Had been here, were coming here, was involved in it. And at the very beginning, uh, you know, I reached out to the commander of the base, that was Vinnie Johnson. I reached out to Brian Schatz. Um, reached out to uh the FBI. Um, I tried everything to to be doing the right thing. I felt like I did do the right thing, but certainly if I was re-elected, this was right when I got elected, I would handle it differently. Uh, but I do feel in the end that I helped. I certainly had that confirmed by uh the people from the Department of Justice. They came out and told me that after I had all this bad press. Um. And again, this was uh really at the very beginning of my first term. And so that has been being pushed out. I saw Sylvia Luke and Jill Takuta. I really don't like this kind of negative uh campaigning that I think is more a sign of the continental United States. And so anyway, I some, you know, in my core, I am American and I would never do anything to hurt my country. I want to help the country. Um, I ask for your vote. Um, and I also appreciate um Honey Anne saying how important it is to watch the council meetings. Her husband was one of those that uh filmed it and PC and that um when you actually watch it, that's the best way to see a candidate form because you see how we all interact together. And um, so um, thank you. Thank you for the nice words that are being said here. Oh, you said just a little bit about um Why Mea four hundred? Um, the signs are down. What happened if you know? Um, I don't know. Um. Yeah, half the world speaks Spanish. Uh, no puedo hablar español pero cuando fue una joven vive en Arizona entonces escuché mucho pero no recuerdo más. So I can speak a little bit. Um, speak a little bit of Hawaiian. Um. So anyway, I appreciate everybody who's listening. I appreciate you, Mel. Can I just say what value it has been over those two years of the COVID shutdown and for many people who had a lot of fear and they were really staying at home. And for many people who had a lot of fear and they were really staying at home, um I think you kept people company. You know, many people stayed at home. I tried to be very careful. But I I will own also that I am somebody who doesn't feel like anything should be mandated on others, especially personal health choices. So that's um another way that um I may or may not be different. I I believe, Mel, you um support uh people's ability to make their own health choices. Is that correct?
Yeah, we never, uh one of the things we were very careful about uh was that we did not force or push any particular side. We we obviously believed that we we believed it was a dangerous time and we supported many of the actions taken by the government, uh especially when when we didn't know what was going on. Uh we didn't know what covid was and people were, a lot of people were dying. But we relied on the experts that we brought on the show and and uh but yeah, that was one of the things we we made sure we didn't push any uh of the mandates or force people to do what they didn't believe they they, you know, we we told everybody, talk to your doctor, talk to your your resources and you make the best decision. But uh at the end of the day, we we are responsible for taking care of ourselves and our loved ones and making sure they had the information that they needed to make their own decisions.
Yeah, yeah, so yeah, I'm in agreement on um that and I appreciate what you did do. And I watched a lot of your shows. And hey, by the way, everybody listening, I was really trying to push uh Mel into being a programmer at Kawai Community Radio because, you know, you're a natural. So um yeah, I learned so much from my audience out there.
As lo- as long as we get, you know, you get good guests. I mean, we try to provide content, as you know, very well on your radio show. You gotta have good content. You gotta have content that that uh people wanna listen to and and uh yeah, I just didn't, I didn't intend for this thing to go on now almost three years. Uh and we're trying to wean off of covid and and get more into what's important right now. And and it is about the the upcoming election. It is about getting to know your candidates. It's it's about not just reading a postcard uh that someone paid a lot of money for and and making a decision based on that. And it's, I I totally highly recommend people go to Civil Beat and read the questionnaires. They they put out some really good questions uh and read that. You can read the responses from almost all of the candidates that are running, but I really, we really push that. So we're trying to help out by allowing anyone to come in um and share their platform, share their platform to to everybody. And I don't care what party, I don't care what race. I got, I got, you know, not yelled at, but I got some really uh harsh messages from people questioning why I was bringing Republicans on and
Ah.
Yeah, how's that? I mean, like, hey, whoa.
I I say I'm politically ambidextrous. I mean, I am Democrat, but my my son says, Mom, you're really a very generous libertarian. I wanna help everyone. But I really want people to be able to make their own decisions. I don't wanna tell people what to do. I want to empower people. But whether people are Republican or Democrat, to me, they're just human beings. And um yeah, no, 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 no problem at all on on that one and
Yeah, so I I don't even mention it. We put the promo slide up. I don't say Democratic candidate, Republican, no, it's just this person like this. And you you said it earlier, you don't like running against anybody. Uh we uh we we are running for um a a a seat. We are running for a seat. We're not running against someone for a seat. We're just running for a seat. That's another beautiful thing about this at large. Uh you know, if it was districts, you'd be running against somebody.
Yeah, I don't like, I don't like to put somebody down. Hey, I wanna make the suggestion. I'm kinda building it on what Honey Anne is saying. Um Wednesday, and let me even drive that at you, Mel, Raposo and um uh Scotty Shapiro, Honey, anybody, Mike, LeBrett. Um Wednesday, we have a very full agenda and it's an important agenda. And it's everything from the youth adolescent, uh the adolescent treatment facility. I mean, we're, that'll be an executive session, but I really wanna hear what people have to say about it. Um I actually feel pretty confident we're gonna be able to have a a comfortable resolution um on on Wednesday because I I can't say what I've read, but I have read things and I feel better. There is changes that makes me feel better. Um but we have that. We have something like what I was just talking about, freedom. Our um HRS one twenty seven A dash thirteen, which is the emergency proclamation that bases everything, all the emergency powers around the governor's opinion. I actually am doing a resolution for a new bill to be sent through HSAK, Kawai State Association of Counties that changes that from their opinion to the governor's determination based on facts and circumstances. And then having that sixty day window that at that point, if they're gonna continue it, that they have to have the endorsement of the legislature so that we don't make a mistake. And who knows who comes in the future, that we that we hold our strength on that. We also have our ag dedication uh bill. We have, I don't know if you guys are paying attention, we have a whole new zone called Sea Level Rise Constraint District. Have you followed that, Mel?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you know, I think that there's some pretty significant things. And then sometimes these bills that sound pretty good, like fifteen percent of the parking lots to have uh solar par- parking spaces, uh it sounds great. Maybe we can put the conduit under the ground for it. You know, we have so much changing going on in the world and electric is going up. And um we don't have any place to throw the batteries away here. And where are we even gonna get the batteries? Like, you know, we have these visions that haven't worked everything out, including in the state, right? Are we gonna go rip up the Paiuts or the Shoshones or who's reservation? Are we gonna go and destroy it, you know? Like, we we had the North Dakota Access Pipeline that we, a lot of people fought. Standing Rock, well, you know, these these um batteries are gonna be the next standing rock if we actually go after the lithium. So um there's a lot of opportunity to come in and testify. And um are you busy, Mel? Can you come in? I wanna put it on you. Show up.
Uh you know, this this is, and I and I'm glad you're asking the questions. Again, I'm going back to this where you're you're, you are willing to ask the tough questions. This is my, this is, because I I read the agendas. I I'm on the list. I'm on the email list, so I get the, you know. And if you're not on the list, uh go to the county website and go to the county council section and subscribe to the the mailing list so you get the um the the agendas. Anyway, so I've been following the agendas and 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 I just saw the last uh this last agenda as well as this one. It looks like the administration is pumping everything down now to get it resolved before the new council is coming in. That that's, I mean, I I think that's what's happening. And and I I I'm preaching to the choir right here with you, Felicia, but and take the time you guys need to answer all of those questions. That the electric battery thing is a real deal. That's not something to just ask because the administration said it's a good thing.
Well, it's the administration. It's the high vote getter in the council. So it's not the administration. And and I I see Chris made a good comment about solar charging stations are expensive. Well, they're between four to eight thousand dollars, so it's like average that out, six thousand dollars. But what I also started to look at, like I called um the installer, that's that's what I do. I, you know, I sit there and do the due diligence on it. I call the the company that does the installs and asked, you know, what they can do, what they can't do, how often do they have to um change out it? When do they go bad often? Well, in fact, yeah, they do, you know? Um and so if you're having to put a new one in, you know, three years or four years and then the technology changes, it's like reading a book and the batteries die. I like a real book, um you know, and so um I like a real book. And um when the battery dies and you're trying to read the book, you know, and and I just there there's different technologies that could be really good. Um I like the the hydrogen technology where you take sewage. So sewage can be turned into hydrogen, so then you can put that in the car. So I call that poop to power. Can I say something real quick? I know I just keep talking. Um I just wanna say something about solid waste. Um and and somebody asked, are there Tesla superchargers on Kawai? I don't think so. And if you have something go wrong with your Tesla, you have to put it on a boat and take it over to Oahu and then bring it back. And so when they say this is economic for people, I don't know. I don't know if it is, especially, you know, six years later, eight years later, your batteries are dead. So um but doesn't mean people will say, oh, she doesn't like the environment. Yes, I do. I'm thinking about all the beyond just that um exhaust plus. When you're charging most of these cars at night, it could buy a power plant or something, you know, it's gonna be charging on diesel at night. We're getting our new um electric buses. Well, they charge at night. So we got the line loss, you know, from going from diesel into charging those batteries. Um, okay, I had one other piece. Oh, my gosh, no.
Solid use, solid waste.
Solid waste, okay. I'm constantly looking at how we're gonna solve that problem because it's a big and um pressing problem. So I looked, if people, you guys look at something called wasteway.com and doesn't have the E, W A S T, away.com. And that's something that grinds up our garbage and it does separate different things out. And um it makes these pellets that could um go in our biofuels plant that's running out of trees, you know? So you put different scrubbers on it. I'm just kinda trying to look. Um and it looks like how fast that goes through. So then, that's what I want, like when, if we do hydrogen, as I say, poop to power hydrogen, emission-free cars, the emissions from hydrogen is water and oxygen. I like that. Um if we have a way to essentially burn the rubbish, though it gets it gets separated out, there's this whole process that I'm still kinda trying to learn about. And I've got the little pellets. I've been looking at what the pellets look like. Um yeah, wasteway.com. Thank you, Rosie Marsh, for putting that in there. Um that's correct. And so I I even called Tennessee. We've gotta do something. And that seems like something that could happen quickly. So I I've talked a lot. I really appreciate all of you.
We appreciate you for for spending your your time with us tonight. Uh I don't have a problem going overtime, uh if if if, you know, no, it's pretty cool. And we just appreciate you. And again, we can do this again uh be- before November. That's never a problem. I always enjoy talking to you. Um I do, uh I tell you, the the solid waste issue, if you look at my uh
Cool.
Civil Beat, my Civil Beat questionnaire, when they asked me what was the most pressing issue, I I, you know, I said it's the the solid waste issue. Does it mean I don't think affordable housing or drugs or crime uh is an issue? Absolutely not. I I think they were all very critical, but I think what the crisis that we will feel real soon, real soon is the solid waste dilemma. We have no place to take our trash in about four to five years. It takes about eleven, they figure eleven years on a, if everything works out to put up a new landfill. So we'll have the discussion later.
Wait, look at that waste away because we could do it in four years.
I'm actually quite familiar with waste away. It was one of the technologies that I was, well, it's it's a very, very valid option for this county. I I'll say that. Um but but this county needs to have that discussion. You cannot expect to do it in a committee meeting once a month or twice a month. This, like you said earlier, it's having a workshop. It's having, setting up a a subcommittee or a task force with stakeholders that know what the heck they're talking about.
Right.
And uh finding the solutions for our community. And that model of of task forces or subcommittees needs to be used for all of our issues. This crap cannot be handled twice a month at a council meeting. I guess that's all I'm trying to say.
Yeah, and Honolulu, they did fall through. That's um Maalo and uh, yep, can't do it there. You know, we can't do it in a lot of places. Uh uh we'll have to on the side, Mel, talk about um the uh waste away because it certainly seems like we need to not be sending everything off to Asia. We we we're gonna have so many problems if we don't just become resilient, right? We need to be resilient here. And I think that um, you know, as I I I guess I'm throwing one last thing in there. This is National Suicide Awareness Month. We did have um a talk on that. Did I already say that? Like, we lost five people? One, a very, very good friend of mine. Um so I'm actually very sad about that. That was on Monday. He passed. Um and I think that when we give people a sense of empowerment and more freedom, that's why I say freedom, freedom, freedom. I don't wanna like be mandating people things. We can have some guidelines and let's just, let's let's do it right, you know? I think it's, I think it's totally possible that we don't have to have every decision we made made for us, you know? Um I think that it's it's possible to remove some of the constraints of so many laws. And we have to do that careful too in the workshops, right? We don't wanna get rid of something that's important, but um we are, we are permitted to death, literally. We don't have housing is all that we have to have. So we, when we made our building code so strong, we lost the housing for our people. We push people out. We make people desperate. People grow with despair. Um Mike says, growing our food is always an issue. We could grow food for other places and and export instead of seed. Yes, and but we certainly could grow plenty of food here. So um uh, yeah.
Yep. And and again, you know, as I say, look to your state legislature. Uh look to your, as as we look at this election coming up. And uh and I'm talking to all of you across the state in your individual districts. And like I said, you know, look at what they've done for you in the in their turn, in the last term. Do they deserve your vote? That's the only, you can make that decision, but um thi- this is, people gotta vote. People need to vote. And like like Felicia said earlier, thank you to the thirty nine point six percent of the people on Kawai that voted in the primary. We can do better, people. We can and we must do better.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta get a, we gotta encourage our friends and we've got to know to look um for the ballots. And then when we get them, you know, probably turn them in pretty quickly. So feliciacowden.com, I, can I be humble enough to tell you, I really need your help, everybody out there listening? Um I do, I feel like I I I need, need their help. So, thank you.
Thank you again, Felicia. I I really do hope we get the opportunity to work together uh in the next term. Uh thank you for all that you do, for this community uh in and outside of the council. Really appreciate you. You're everywhere and uh stay safe, work hard. And uh all you people, check it out. If you wanna, if you have more questions for Felicia, please visit her website. She gave you her cell number. Um talk to her, call her up. You should do that with all your candidates for council. Get to know them, get inside their heart and uh and vote, vote, vote.
Uh can I throw that in there too? Hey, when people call me, people call me and they'll say, what does so and so think about this? Or who do I think they should vote for? I say, I want you to vote for who's right for you. And they'll ask me what somebody else thinks about it. And I go, well, why don't you call them, you know? And they'll go, well, I don't really wanna bother them. And I'd be playful and say, well, I'm glad you you want to bother me to find out what they think about. Um but call them and if they don't answer or they don't return your call, while they have the motivation to get your vote, that might tell you something about what happens when they're not motivated to get your vote.
Yeah.
And all of those who tell, telling you to voted for me, thank you so much. And um thank you to anybody who is even listening or just voting for anybody. And I will always be there for you regardless.
Awesome. Thanks again, Felicia. Thank you, thank you. Enjoy your weekend, your long weekend. Um you know, have fun, relax, take some time for yourself and we will see you on the road. Uh for all of you, again, uh have a great Labor Day weekend. We won't be on on Monday night, uh Labor Day. In honor of Labor Day, you guys, long weekend, party, beaches and everything, so we're not gonna compete with that. We'll see you guys again.
Happy birthday, Mel, on Monday.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, thank you. Uh looking forward to a nice, relaxing birthday on Sunday. So you guys take care. God bless. We love you guys. We'll see you guys next week.